To the Board of Supervisors meeting for September 21st. Before the start of this night, this regular meeting, we had a budget work session with our Ways and Means Board and were good to go with the first item on the agenda, which is a presentation from Delaware Valley University called The Terrain.
I would just like to note, for the purpose of the Board, there's no action to be taken tonight.
Nope.
If they're making a presentation, getting an idea of what the Board may or may not like, or maybe we'll have comments, plus comments from the public, because I believe the Township Manager did notify persons in the public that this matter will be on tonight's agenda for a presentation.
All right.
Whoever is leading the presentation.
Come on up.
Where are you?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ben Ruselowski, and I have the pleasure and privilege of serving DelVal as its interim President and as Vice President for Academic Affairs and Dean of the Faculty. I had the opportunity to stand before you two months ago, where I was honored to receive on behalf of the university, a proclamation from the supervisors recognizing our 125th anniversary and the special relationship that the university and the township have had during that time period. Tonight, I stand before you with a proposal from our team to expand that relationship to include Terrain, with whom we've been partnering, on realizing our vision for our farm market on Lower State Road. That vision is one that is consistent with DelVal's mission, its commitment to experiential education and hands-on learning, and will provide untold opportunities for our students, our faculty, and our staff. That vision will also recognize and realize opportunities for the residents of the township and provide valuable resources as well, right here in our backyard and for the communities that surround us. Leading the presentation tonight for DelVal will be Randy Barfield, our Vice President for Finance and Administration, and I'm going to turn the podium over to him right now. Thank you again for having us here this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening. Thanks so much for welcoming us here. So, I'd like to just give a little bit of an overview about what we're looking at for this project and talk about the criteria that are important to our constituents and our stakeholders, the Board of Trustees. And then I'll introduce David Zeal and the Terrain team to give a video and show a little bit about the vision for the operations. And then I'd like to circle back and speak a little bit about the specifics that Ben just mentioned, about the integration and importance of this to the mission of our organization of the university. And finally, we would then ask the Terrain folks to be able to speak to the operational aspects of this partnership. So, as you know, we've long had a farm market associated with the university, and it's been vacant now for a year or more. And so, as we started to look at our criteria for what we wanted to do with this asset, we had three specific things that the Board wanted us to focus on. First and foremost was a desire for a strong connection to the mission of our university. And so, as you know, agriculture is the cornerstone of who DelVal is, has been for 125 years. And having a farm market as an outlet for our crops and produce and the products that the students, in many cases, help manufacture, like pepper sauces, et cetera, is real important and vital to our mission and what we deliver. Second is, in addition to having an outlet for our products, this is a key thing that we wanted to really pay attention to when we look for a partner, is focus and commitment to the experiential learning aspect. And so, as we are very proud of 125 years of, you know, this was founded as the National Farm School. And with that, you know, focus on learning by doing. And so, we really looked strongly to find a partner that is going to embrace our commitment to furthering the students' learning by helping support them with internships and learning opportunities in that aspect. And the third key element is the strength of a partner. We're a private school. We're in competition with a lot of other public resources. We believe that we, you know, bring a valuable education to our students with smaller class sizes and, but, you know, there's expenses associated with a private school. And so, having an operation that's going to help bring some additional revenues in. Every penny that we bring in helps support our students by helping us, you know, continue to offer scholarships. So, we couldn't be more tickled to find Terrain as our potential partner that we really are excited about. Terrain is a brand, part of a brand name and part of a $4 billion public company. So, the financial strength is there, and the commitment to our mission and experiential learning is absolutely strong. And so, what I'd like to do now is turn it over to the Terrain team, and they'll show you a little video and the vision for what we see in this operation.
So, I think they're pulling up right now. This just gives you kind of a little brief overview of the feel and the overall ambiance that you find at a Terrain. Thanks. And then while they're pulling up the next set of drawings, what you saw there was a little overview of kind of the, all of the pieces that make up Terrain. So, there's a retail garden center, which is focused on really, on fresh plants, on preserved plants, on home goods. We have a café, which is focused on fresh seasonal, seasonally changing menu, partnerships with local farmers for produce, for their meat products, for their dairy, and then the event space also. And so, if you take a look, what we're excited about is not only the opportunity for this partnership, but the site is actually really ideal also. We're able to work a lot within what's there already. Go ahead. Oh. Are you able to pull up the plans? I can go ahead through this.
While you're waiting, would you please let the minister know who you are, so we recognize that you spoke?
Yes, I'm Jennifer Caliagas with Urban Outfitters.
You gotta slow down and say that again.
Jennifer Caliagas with Urban Outfitters.
They're working on it. I can see them. So, you know.
Yeah, that's okay.
Does anybody else think they need to change their PowerPoint presentation title? Delaware Valley University.
Is this Ed Dooley or somebody else?
I don't know. They're inspector with the, they're pulling it up.
It's Commons. They're working on it.
We can do it with a fly-through if he doesn't have, I don't know if he has the, I don't know.
Yeah, I can take you through it. I'm Dave Zeal, Chief Development Officer for Urban Outfitters, representing Terrain. So, what they were going to show you is the utilization of the existing structures, the farmer's market, as well as then the additional structures required, which is actually minimal compared to what we normally would do in a ground-up site. So, we think, first of all, I'll speak, I'm a very close resident to here and excited with the opportunity to bring this partnership potential to our region. I've been working with Delaware Valley for probably the better part of eight months. Very difficult for Terrain to find a partner, because it's very much different than anything else we do at Urban Outfitters. Everything else is essentially driven around standard retail. And this is our, this is our founder, Dick Kane, brought forth this concept. I've delivered it three times, and only three times, because it really does require a partnership, I think, to make it work. The original vision was about utilizing and growing your own products, bringing things in, not only from a local share of additional businesses and marketplaces, but then almost a sustainable footprint of bringing in all the best products, seasonal, organic, into the concept. This is the first time we've had a partner that can actually contribute to that. And if we took you through the site plan, if you can go to the next slide, I can kind of show you a little bit. What we have there, if you look at the tan color, those are the existing buildings and structures that are currently on the site. The orange proposes the additions, what then, that then creates and kind of entails our entire concept. So, really, if you look at acreage, you look at what's there, you know, it's just in our vernacular to how do we keep that reclaim that you saw in the video, really make this thing blend into the overall concept and the Terrain. So, we feel great that this isn't a huge expansion, working at low heights, doing a lot of great things. So, the, again, the orange is the newer additions to the existing footprint, which is in tan. And we can go to the next slide and kind of give you an overview of what the site starts to look at. You can go as fast as you want. I'll stay up. Who's clicking?
There you go.
So, the existing site, you can see the Terrain Retail, if you look at that one, the one line there, that's the existing structure there, guys, the barn market structure. So, you can see we're letting that still become the predominant feature, taking everything below it, blending it in, so we keep those sightlines nice. Obviously, if we're afforded the opportunity to move forward with the partnership, we really see a lot of work in land development of minimizing parking. We'd prefer, if code would allow it, to actually be gravel, but I don't think we would get that done. That being said, we're trying to also work on those sightlines. We'll have some berming, a lot of landscaping. We are a landscape-driven concept, so our site and the experience we create, it's, anybody who's been in here has been one, it's nothing short of beautiful. So, you know, we're not, we're not coming here, we're not, we're looking to make it a beautiful experience. So, yeah, the Terrain Café is a function. I'm proud of it. I also run the food and beverage for Urban Outfitters, and I'm very proud of Terrain Café. We have four cafes now, Westport, Connecticut, Stires, which is Glenn Mills, Devon, and we feel really, and Palo Alto, we have one in Palo Alto, California. So, we're excited. We've been ranked as high as number 50 as a brunch. It's a brunch-oriented business. It's not a nighttime-oriented business. You move into our lion's share, which is the nursery area, and that piece, we think that's a huge blend in the partnership. Food and beverage allows us, really excited, we've had a couple of meetings on a potential alliance agreement, and really excited about not only to add, but using the produce. There's a lot of things to accomplish health-wise, you know, we got to, we got to work through all those that were allowed the opportunity, but growing, maybe expanding their grow business, all the produce coming, seasonality from DBU production, as well as livestock, to be quite candid with you, is an opportunity for us. So, we're really excited about, this could be a site that's a sustaining site, that really allows that production to occur in DBU and allows this community to have a combination of what we do retail and what they do agriculturally. So, I like the blend. Very, very simple structures, and outside of that, I can answer any questions later on what you think. The one piece that is unique to our business is the event piece. And we think that event piece in the alliance agreement allows us to focus on predominantly very four big things, which are our festivals, the Fall Festival, the Winter Festival, really kind of put you guys, the Doylestown Extended Area, on the map, combining what they do with festivals at DBU and what we do naturally at Terrain, and bring the workshops, have students do workshops on our site, because we do it all the time, whether you want to do an atrium, whether you want to do a reef, whether you want to do X, Y, Z. We think we got that nice combination of bringing the students into that as well. But, the event business, it is, it is a business that is critical to our overall concept. It's generally only wedding-driven, it's generally only weekend-driven, it's an ancillary use. We also think we have an opportunity to blend it with plenty of events and so forth, whether it's fundraising, students doing things, symposiums, whatever we say, there's a lot to develop if we're afforded the opportunity to develop the relationship, Randy and I, moving forward. So, that is kind of our, our mission, if you will.
I have a question.
You bet.
When you're, you're talking about events and festivals, are you contemplating on private parties, like weddings and?
We do, so the, absolutely. So, the wedding business is a, is a piece of it, so generally our standard, so not to talk in details, but our, the way we set up our venue is we're not a big, we don't want to compete with anybody, we're a niche venue for that. So, we're a 150-person venue only, okay? We cook our own food in the kitchen, which is part of that event center, and that's, that's our intimacy to it, is it's not on blunts and burners, it's not that. It's the produce and everything that we bring in, fresh there, but very small wedding events. Everything transitions on our plan, just to give you how it works. We have a ceremony garden, which is the beautiful garden. The ceremony occurs in there. There's a transition point in every one of our terrains, if you've been there, which is the, if you will, the covered deck area, which that transitions us from a wedding ceremony to the cocktail reception, and then it falls in, it falls into the inside. So, any type of entertainment, any type of dancing, any type of dinner is held inside the four-wall of the venue. So, there's no music outside, no bands outside. We actually don't allow bands, we only do DJ-only. It's a very small intimate thing, and we've, we've been quite successful with it. I, I've had plenty of people propose it should be bigger, I won't let it be bigger, because Terrain, Terrain's not about big, it's about special, and that's kind of what all of urban's about, whether it's Free People, Anthropology, it's about our special experience. So, very small, intimate, but all indoor, no outdoor. The festivals we speak of are routine things, that you already have festival activity with Delaware Valley. Those are traditionally seasonal things we do, four times a year, which is incorporates all the businesses in your community, would incorporate DBU and us, whether it's Christmas Village and Our Way with DBU, or it's Autumn Festival, which is right around the corner, done our way with DBU and the local businesses. We bring a lot of local partners in. If you go to, if you go to Autumn Days at Stires, you'll see that we invite all the businesses, whether they're food, whether they're agriculture, whether they're florists, and bring them into those four festivals, which I think are a critical part of our alliance, to give the community something special between DBU and Terrain in a really well-thought-out way.
I, oh, sorry. We saw a wine glass. What do you contemplate in terms of alcohol for your facility?
Haven't gone really down the road. We have two different versions. So, if it's Stires, that's a BYOB both in the café and as well in the wedding. It's not a deterrent to our business model. We haven't even, we haven't gotten far enough to determine. Generally, our other terrains do have a liquor license acquired on the premises. I've sat before the Board on, on four different occasions with Terrain, and we certainly would get into a conversation about, you know, what are the hours, what do we do? Terrain Café?
Just curious, you don't have to, you don't need to have those answers.
Good.
You do anticipate alcohol in some form.
Yes, I do.
So, just a couple of, just a couple of reflections and comments. I come from a bit of a unique perspective, outside of being a Board member, I live directly across the street. And so, and I'm very familiar with Terrain. I've been to weddings at Terrain, I've eaten at, in Devon.
Thank you.
Several, several times, and so I know the quality of what you guys do, it's beautiful. I think it's important to note that, you know, I think if you're seeing this for the first time, it may look kind of overwhelming, but living across the street, when we talk about things like events, there were events with Shady Brook for many years, there were hundreds of people out front drinking alcohol with live music that I could hear inside my house with the door closed. And I can't speak for my neighbors, but it never bothered me on a Friday night, it was nice to hear some live music out back. But, so, I, I just think it's important, for me, I'm noting that this doesn't go too far from the scope of what Shady Brook was doing, this is just doing it the right way. And so, I'm very excited about this. I think it's, I think it could be, really bring a lot of tourism to Doylestown Township and put something within our town that is, you know, the opportunity to have something like this with DelVal University, I think could just be, you know, we look at the university, the hospital, the things that our township has, and having something like this would just be a perfect trifecta of what this township has to offer, so.
I appreciate that.
I would just say one more thing. I work also with the Educational Foundation with the school district, and the opportunities you offer students and the district could really be awesome. You definitely hit a note with me in terms of sustainability and agritourism, which is on the growth and gives our kids an excellent opportunity to work and experience and explore, if that may be something they want to be a partake in. So, hopefully you can have that conversation with the school district as well.
Absolutely. You know, it's hard for me, we're presenting, but the pure passion that came out of the first meeting, it's hard to come in front of the public and the Board, and you see so many presentations, the sincerity of what we think we can do with DBU, regardless of the old arrangement, is completely different. And, you know, I live a hop, skip, and a jump from you. My wife has a business in Doylestown and Newtown, and my word is, is that this is, this is something that can be very special. And I mean that, not to get a project done, I mean that from the bottom of my heart, that I think it actually can be something special, where when we originally, I want to tell you this, and it's important, when we originally envisioned the first Terrain at Stires, Dick Kane and I went and bought J. Franklin Stires Nursery, okay? We had a landscaping service. That now is, now spun off, because we're a $4 billion company and hiring practices are a bit different. But they, they, we spun that off, and that's with my brother-in-law, but the importance of what we tried to do initially, we also went to Seattle, Washington, and looked at a group called Mallbacks. And our whole original Terrain concept was, how do we grow for ourselves? How do we produce for ourselves? There's models out there with chefs doing it, of how you, you farm and bring that product in here. So, this is actually, for Dick Kane, he's like, he's actually like a child with it right now, because it's actually doing what he, it's a possibility to do what we wanted to do originally, is can we work with DBU, which is very apparent after my initial meetings with them, to produce, sell, have their products, bring a retail revenue stream to DBU with their own, own section of retail sales within the environment, in the farmer's market, coupled with bringing all their products wholesale that we can bring in. We want, what we can do to give a wedding with products produced, or our café with products produced at DBU, is about as local as you can take something, and that's what we're looking to do. And that was our original vision, and I want you to know that.
All right.
One thing I was looking at with these plans, we have a long bike trail that recently got put in along Lower State, right in front of this property, and you're not too far from the 202 Parkway. Have you looked into how to integrate our bike services with this facility?
We will. So, a couple notes is if you, if we have the, if we have the ability to get to the land development process in any other project I would do, we would look, I don't know all the initiatives that have been done on, on the bike trails, I've seen them. We would incorporate inland development, Urban Outfitters would be true to incorporating the existing township initiatives and visions of both the residents and the township within the parameters of the acreage that is, that is in the agreement and beyond, to be quite candid with you. Connection's an important thing, so if we can help facilitate what you're trying to accomplish on the perimeters of the property, we're 100% on board with that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the Board? Any questions from anyone out there? We are going to have to come up and take.
The podium.
The podium, yeah.
If you want to sit down, yeah.
Come on up and ask your question at the podium, please. Identify yourself.
We don't have another.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Ovens. I also live across the street from Delaware Valley University. While I do applaud the overall concept of the idea and bringing business and wholesome things to our neighborhood, I do have some concerns about some of the events that have happened in the past and the scale of them with some overflow parking and people coming and parking into the neighborhoods. If we're going to be using and increasing the overall building structure, what are we doing to compensate for additional parking, and how large are these events anticipated to be? Also, we have a lot of water flow along this area and some water concerns with, you know, to be taken under consideration, and also the bike path and traffic. We have that narrow pathway with the train bridge over the, over the one road leading into there, and we also have the train bridge and some traffic concerns that need to be considered when developing this location. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson Lyons and Supervisors and Staff. Mark Miller, 14 Garden Path. I, too, am a neighbor right across the street. I walk through that area every day with the pets and for running, exercise. I want to thank DelVal for being such a great community partner. They are just wonderful to work with, and during the pandemic, I think it's been great having their campus open for recreational activities, and the pathway that the township put in is wonderful. I really appreciate that, thank you for that. And I totally support the Terrain proposal. I think that would be a great addition for the community and a good partnership with the education community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else need to say anything? Okay. I think you, who, where's that gentleman speaking?
Right there. Yeah. Randy's going to speak again.
Do you, somebody else to speak?
Randy.
Go ahead, Randy.
Well, thanks. Randy Barfield, again, the Vice President of Finance at Delaware Valley University. So, so we're, we're just very excited about this, this opportunity, and I just wanted to touch a little bit about the integration with our mission, the focus on the students, you heard some of that, but we envision having a strategic alliance, a formal strategic alliance that extends beyond an operating agreement. And we've, we've had a couple of working sessions already with, with my team, with the Dean of School of Agriculture back here, Dr. Brock Sandelin, who will help ensure that our students have opportunities to engage, and all of David's team. And so, key things of this is really a big focus on the internships and the opportunities there. We will have a university-run farm market in, on the premises, inside the store, that'll be stocked with our produce, run by our students, proceeds come to our, our university or to the student clubs. We envision multiple educational opportunities throughout the year for the faculty to have an opportunity to use the facility as well. And as Dave mentioned, the festivals, the coordination of festivals, you know, we have A-Day, they have these, their four big festivals, there's a real huge opportunity for integrating those, not only on the premises that we will be operating with the Terrain, but potential adjunct things, like growing a corn maze on our property, that will then, you know, help, help with the agritourism and agretainment aspects. So, all of that's going to be documented in a strategic alliance agreement, and, you know, we're just real tickled about the opportunities.
Okay, great. I think it's fair to say that the Board is in favor of you going forward, and I think you have a large number of people here that are also in favor, so I think you, you got a red, a green light.
It's exciting. Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Public certification, I believe the next steps will be that we'll work with their staff and try to start working through the aspects of how this is accomplished, from a zoning and other aspect, but obviously, just because you liked the project tonight doesn't mean you're providing any final approvals.
Correct.
It'll take a little bit of work through the process to find out how we get there, and we will do that in an expeditious fashion, because obviously, I think people would like to see us move as reasonably soon as possible, knowing we have to get it right.
Well, like the gentleman had those concerns about water, traffic.
agreement. And, and, you know, we're just real tickled about the opportunities.
Okay, great. I think it's fair to say that the board is in favor of you going forward. And I think you have a, a large number of people here that are also in favor. So I think you, you got a red, a green light.
It's exciting. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Public certification, I believe the next steps will be that we'll work with their staff and try to start working through the aspects of how this is accomplished from a zoning and other aspect. But obviously, just because you like the project tonight doesn't mean you're providing any final approvals.
Correct.
It'll take a little bit of work through the process to find out how we get there. And we will do that in a expeditious fashion because obviously I think people would like to see us move as reasonably soon as possible, knowing we have to get it right.
Well, like the gentleman had those concerns about water, traffic, that would all be addressed. All those things are going to be addressed.
And I can say during our discussion with them during the staff meeting, we had the same issues.
Yes.
So we recognize the need to be concerned about traffic, stormwater.
Crowds.
Noise, everything else. So we know what it means to be.
And one of the things we do do is when they do start the planning process, courtesy letters will go out again to the residents. And so you will be able to participate in the planning process. And if they go to the zoning hearing board as well, there will be opportunities, certified letters are sent for those, and would encourage anyone interested to attend those specific meetings when they begin. But this was just the first initial view at, at what they're proposing. There's a lot of work to do between now and an official meeting.
Okay. You have to take the podium, ma'am. You have to take the podium. Excuse me. You, excuse me. If you'd like to speak, you have to take the podium. Okay. Thank you.
All right. I think we have, we have our game plan.
Any, anybody else? Okay. All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
Everybody else?
You're all leaving. Okay, we're going to give them a couple minutes to, to leave clear.
There you go.
I shouldn't think we'd take that many people.
Now we know. All right, we're going to go back to business. Can you take your conversa? Take your meetings outside. Thank you.
At least you didn't let it.
You feel empowered?
Multiple gavels.
Okay.
Okay.
The announcements of, the announcements for tonight. We're next meeting on Tuesday, October 19th at 7:00 PM. We're going to hold a special meeting this, next Tuesday on September 28th at 7:00 PM regarding the Park and Recreation Community Building. Budget work sessions continue on October 5th and October 19th, and they're all at 5:00 PM in this room. Township administrative offices will be closed October 11th for Columbus Day. The Food Truck Festival is this Saturday between 3:00 PM and 9:00. There's going to be local truck food. There's the Beer Garden. There's music. I think it's Officer Quartz is presenting music. And there's the Addams Family movie. So it's a fun, full day. Concerts in the park continue on the 23rd. That's tomorrow with the sensational Soul Cruisers. They're doing, they were already scheduled. They got rained out. And now they're coming back. And thank, and thanks to them for coming back. And they're really great, just so you know. They're very good, yeah. You haven't heard them. It's the 60s. Yeah. It's, you can't help but dance. Okay. The fall movies in the park, as I said, Addams Family is this Saturday. And then on October 8th onward is, it sounds like an adorable movie. Elf Brothers embark on a magical quest to spend one more day with their dad. These movies are free. They're all in Central Park at the amphitheater, CNN Bank Amphitheater, and they'll start at, at dusk. Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling is the first and fourth Tuesday between 9:00 and 2:00 PM. And the third Saturday of each month from 9:00 AM to 11:00. Drop-off site is the New Britain entrance to Central Park. Red Cross Fall Blood Drive is Friday, October 15th, 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Red Cross Blood Mobile. That will be located at the Activity Trailers in Central Park. Please sign up at redcrossblood.org. And the 2021 Bucks County Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event is October 30th, the Strayer Middle School in Quakertown. Next item, oh, you have to register, otherwise you won't be able to drop off your stuff. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Board of Octo, of August 17th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, corrections? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is a request to honor Diane Herring, one of our former supervisors. She died in 2018. As you well know, you probably read Stephanie's memo and also a letter from her daughter, Colette. Colette? She was our first woman supervisor, probably the first woman elected in this area. And she did a lot of good things. And Ms. Herring, daughter of Diane, is asking that we honor her with a naming and it's one of our features in the parks or whatever. So thoughts?
I mean, I think so. She's the first female elected in Doylestown Township. I, I think, you know, from a, from that perspective, a trailblazer. I did not know Ms. Herring, but I, I think we should honor that. I think that's a great achievement. Okay?
We, we've done it for Mr. Berry as well with the, the.
Mr. Berry, yes.
With the hiking trail.
Yeah, that was actually on PennDOT property.
Oh, well.
So, I mean, technicality.
We named it. We named it.
Yeah, it's named for him, but it's on PennDOT property. So.
But it was our, it was our idea.
And, yes.
So, so what are the, what are the options that we're looking at as far as how much, what we're looking to put this plaque or this stone that they were requesting?
What's the question?
They were, they were requesting some sort of facility, park, trail, like.
Just a naming of what's already existing.
Okay. Is there any idea as to what would be appropriate?
Well, there's a list here provided in Stephanie's memo. I, I would say if we make the decision to do it, I would ask the, you know, have the, run it by the park board.
Okay.
See if they pick out something that works for them. I agree.
That sounds, that sounds like.
I mean, Sowerman Park was, probably came to fruition about the same time as Ms. Herring served on the Board of Supervisors. That may be an area that the park board might want to start, is just a thought.
Sowerman Park?
I think that sounds good.
Sowerman, that's great. What is Sowerman? Is that the name of the street, right?
Right. It's just named for the, at this point in time, Sowerman Park is just named after, because it's on Sowerman.
Seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, I think bring it back to the park board and kind of run it through with them. Let them kind of help in the decision process.
Karen still here? Do you get that? Got it. Thanks, Karen. You got a whole list of things to take to the park board now. One more. All right, thank you. All right. So we'll, we'll pass this on to the park board for their recommendation. But the idea is to do something.
Do something, yes.
Will you communicate that to Ms. Herring?
I will.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next item, we have some, three requests for fee waivers.
Yes.
I think we should do them individually. Food Shed Alliance is requesting a waiver totaling $360. Your thoughts?
Well, historically, we've given waivers to nonprofits for under $1,000. So I think this fits that.
Okay, agreed. Is that a motion and a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we have two parties now, block parties. One is.
Forty Woodview.
You know, this is Arnie Feldman's Forty, okay. Your thoughts on $150 waiver for this event? He's been doing it every year.
Do we waive it every year?
He's, it's never been charged.
They haven't requested it. I think they've just in the past maybe have gone through the police department years and years ago. I'm guessing with COVID, they probably didn't do it. And we've gotten a little bit tighter on our special event permit process. So it's probably why it came through this time. So.
So there are two just like that. There's $150 for this, this problem.
And then the other one.
And then the other one, Wagon Wheel Lane Oktoberfest Road Closure. I'm inclined to say yes. I mean, they're.
I am too, but just realize we probably set a precedent going forward with block party.
Well, you know what? If neighbors want to have a block party, safely have a block party, I'm okay with that.
I will say, I am, I'm okay with it. And if Sinclair's recommending it for both of these, why do we even have the permit in this condition?
The Board, the Board of Supervisors is the only one who can waive a permit fee. The township staff cannot.
But, well, I understand, I understand that aspect of it. But is it worth visiting it to remove it for block parties and that kind of?
I think there's some caution that the police need to know about it.
It's good to go through the process.
Road closures, providing the barricades. I mean, our public works will usually drop the barricades off, you know, the Friday before the party.
So more to make sure they submit.
The police need to know for any, you know, God forbid, fire, ambulance, things like that. So they need to communicate that. So there's a little time.
And I understand, I understand the fee aspect. I mean, the application aspect, making sure they have the components as part of it. But if we're going to waive the fee specifically, why don't we just leave it? They have to make the application and remove the fee if we're just going to waive it.
The, the ordinance states technically, the amount of people that are going to be at these things do not require a, a permit. What the, the reason it's getting through the permitting process is why it's a little confusing is because they're asking to shut down a road.
Okay.
All right.
So the amount of people, I think our permitting fee is based on the number of people in attendance. They will not have the number of people. It's the road closures. And the only reason they need the road closure is because they're asking for barricades to physically stop their own people from driving up and down the streets. They're all told at the same time that we have to allow for emergency access. So they can't be putting tents up in the middle of the street. They can't be putting barricades, their own barricades. We have to be able to move the barricades to get a fire truck, an ambulance, whatever it may be down the street. So it's kind of, I think the, the one applicant, Mr. Feldman, offered to come pick up the barricades if that would help waive the, the fee.
To waive the fee.
I don't, I don't really, I don't want to speak to Mr. Tomko, but two barricades at the end of a shift on a Friday, I don't think it's that big a deal.
No, no, it's not.
It's a service and a, and a, but your question's well taken. But you see that they need some guidance when they have.
Well, no, yeah, I understand like the bigger process of it.
Well, if you wanted to avoid having to have these waiver discussions, January, just reduce the permit fee to something more nominal.
Right.
So at least you have an idea of the permits there, but you're not, you know, having to come here to get a waiver.
I mean, it does take, it does take some township effort. I mean, you know, I'm reviewing the whole thing. It's got to go to code enforcement. And so there is, it's going, it's, it's being passed around through multiple departments, but it's not.
$150 doesn't even pay for it. If you wanted to actually build township time, that would be, $150 is.
Correct.
More nominal than that.
I, I get it, but we're trying to.
I mean, to Mr. Garten's point, we can revisit it in January if we want to.
All right. Is there a motion to waive the fee for both of these block parties?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Next is the Bucks County Historic, Historic Society request for a volunteer to serve on their committee. I, I think this should be an appointment. If we're going to do this, have an appointment every year. I mean, I'd be happy to serve until January and the next appointment would be made. I'd be interested in doing it as well. So.
Yeah, same. My Eagle Scout project was working on those trails back there. So I'd like to see them continue to get finished. Whoever does it, I.
I'll let them know. All right. Well, I'm happy to serve. You're happy to serve. We can probably do it together. Great. Anybody else?
Dan's interested.
I'd be happy, depending on the date, I'd be happy to.
All right. We can't all be on it.
Well, there's interest.
I'm a charm wrestler.
Any, any, mine, a ma? What do you need from us? All right, we're going to need a vote. Who? This is silly. Dan and.
I always draw my name to make it easier.
Why don't you two do it? Why don't you two do it? I don't need to, one more thing to do.
Do you want to have, should I make a suggestion to Kyle McCoy that one of you be the representative and the other one be the alternate? So that if someone, like if it's scheduled at a time for one of you, it doesn't work, the other one will attend?
That's fine.
I don't know how many meetings are.
Yeah, if you want to be the point person and I can be like the co-lead.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to be the alternate. I need to see what, I need to see what the dates are, if I can even attend.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So be it. I'm an empty nester right now, so it's fine. All right. Nancy and the alternate Dan. All right.
That's good.
All right, moving along.
Do we need to vote on that or no?
I don't think so.
Consensus of the board.
You have the consensus?
By acclamation.
There you go. All right, Act 30, Commercial Property Assess, Assessed Clean Energy.
Yes. I spoke with Chris Ballerini yesterday. This is a new initiative that the county has, they actually did adopt it on the 15th. And it is for commercial properties that will allow them to get financing to help with green initiatives in their buildings. Kind of asked about if it did apply to possible municipal. And she's going to check, but she didn't think so. I think it's mostly for commercial properties. So it's really just informational. It's something that we'll be able to put on our website and direct people to the county's new program.
And make sure to emphasize that the planning commission as well, that this is something that they can propose.
Yeah, but their, their program's not up and running yet.
No, but it is, it is approved and there are others in this state. So.
So it's encouraging. It's not mandating anything.
Yeah.
Just encouraging.
Absolutely.
Sometimes the technology isn't there, even though the idea is great. Yeah. Okay, thanks. Reports from the solicitor?
I believe this item that Judy will be talking about, the new authorization from the state on small cell tower regulation.
We read the memo. Do you, does anybody have any questions?
There's nothing really to say if you've read the memo.
Yeah, well, everyone's read the memo. I think it's pretty clear.
So just authorize me to prepare an ordinance, and I'll do that and schedule for advertisement.
Is there a motion to authorize?
I just, I just have one question. I understand that the state law overrides most of this. But there was an issue a few years ago. I was talking to a resident who had one of these towers put in the right of way in front of their homes, and they were fairly upset about it. Do we have any way to prevent that in our ordinance? Or is it, they are given pretty much license by the state to do that?
We, we.
Go ahead.
We can't prevent it as they are a public utility. And Act 50 now makes it clear that we don't have any chance to preclude those installations from happening. And our ordinance is pretty much up to date. But what we can do is what we did with that individual. We had several meetings out at the site. We had the wireless communications company out there too. And we always try to get a win-win, or at least less of a loss, if you can. We try to accommodate whatever can happen by working with the companies to accommodate specific requests. We had a lot out of, in front of the Oscar Hammerstein facility also.
Right. And in that case, we were able to work with the company to get it moved. So.
All right. Those, those opportunities are going to be lessened with this new, new ordinance. But yes, is there a motion to, is there a motion and a second?
I don't know if there was actually. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Advertise away. Okay, next item on the agenda, Chief of Police.
Yes. In your packet is a request for me to be able to sign a mutual aid agreement for the Central Bucks Special Response Team. The Special Response Team's been in existence for over a decade. This document has not been updated in, in probably that many years. The mutual aid agreement is basically, it's been vetted by Chris Boyle, who's an attorney and specializes in police liability, as well as Mr. Garten. Basically, what it allows us to do is continue to participate. We would be one of 19 police departments that represents 26 different municipalities.
Okay.
And it's, I would, it's a standard agreement. So if you make any changes, everybody has to change and improve it. So it's pretty much consistent with good police practice.
All right. So we need a motion, a motion to approve, a chief signs this.
Yes.
A motion to approve the execution of this, the CBSRT agreement by Chief.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you. Township engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Director of Operations?
Twenty, we have recommendations for an award for the 2021 Tree Pruning and Takedown Bid. On September 14th, we received four bids for the 21 Tree Program. The low bidder for the base bid plus alternates one and two is Joseph McElvein Tree and Lawn, in the amount of totaling $85,500. I'm asking for the board's approval to award this to Joseph McElvein, 2021. Joseph McElvein, Tree and Lawn.
I'm sorry. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Mr. Torpedo to talk about the 21 Road Program, Part Three.
Yes, and I am looking for a motion from the Board of Supervisors to approve the 2021 Road Program Paving, Part Three. The low bidder was James D. Morrissey. We'd like to award the base bid in the amount of $336,849.20 with alternate number three, which totaled $24,207.30. The total contract value will be $361,056.
The total contract value will be $361,056.50.
Okay, any questions?
I have a slight question probably from Mr. Garten. Since I live on Duane Road, do I have to recuse myself from this at all? Or is it fine?
In fact, you live on a road to be paved?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
No, you can just vote aye twice.
I figured. If it's just in front of your house, I would have a concern.
All right, is there a motion to approve the contract award?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, pavement?
I have a revision to my memo for the 21 pavement marking bid and quote, recommendation for the approval of the quote, so Sean is passing that out. The reason for the revision is that late on Friday, we received another quote and then a revision to the quote for Zone Striping. So the memo that's in front of you is a request to, basically, let me take a step back. If you recall, we put the pavement marking contract out to bid back on July, July, the bid opening was on June 14th. We received no bids. At that time, I brought it in front of the board and asked for approval to readvertise. Mr. Garten indicated if we don't get a second, any second bids, we could negotiate and get quotes. The second bid, we had no bids. We've now gone out and received three quotes. The three quotes are summarized in my memo. The low bid is for $82,289.50 from Zone Striping. I am asking for the board's approval to award this quotation for pavement markings.
Okay, any, is there any questions about that? That was a lot of work, I realize.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is there a motion to approve the award of $82,289.50 to Zone Striping, Inc.?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, finally, I don't have a minute, but I'm going to try to explain it. So as you may recall, every time we have a revision or a new traffic signal or modification to a traffic signal, whether it be ours and/or an applicant that has a land development or something to that regard towards part of our bike hike trail system, we are required by PennDOT to execute a TE160 form. It's a form that is a PennDOT standard form they've been using for years now that basically says is that we are going to maintain the facility, we're going to inspect it, we're going to have a traffic signal maintenance program, we're going to keep records, the whole nine yards. This is a blanket resolution which basically gives, you're basically agreeing to that program on a blanket agreement across all of our traffic signals with PennDOT, and then what it does is it takes that multi-page form, that TE160 form, reduces it to one page, and you're also giving primarily, I think it's Stephanie, the authority as a municipal representative to execute that. So I don't have to, I don't have to, the applicant doesn't have to come in front of the board and/or, you know, bike hike, whoever's doing the modification and ask for the execution of that document.
Wow.
So everything that's in this resolution is in the TE160 form. They've just summarized it on a blanket, and they've basically taken that form down to one sheet, and we're agreeing, so you're doing a blanket agreement. They're asking for a resolution which would be accepting that you are going to enter an agreement, traffic signal maintenance agreement with PennDOT across the board for all of our permitted installations, including traffic signals, school zone flashers, and our flashing pedestrian beacons.
Okay, everyone get that?
Yep.
Any questions?
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing my signature for this traffic signal management application?
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion?
Second, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You did a good job explaining that.
Yeah.
All right, manager?
Yes, coming to the podium are Chris Stanford and Steve DeShulo.
For a very brief presentation.
For a very brief presentation. They have.
We've looked at everything.
Yeah.
We read everything, yeah.
Yeah, very quickly. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, we're here to give a very brief overview on the 202 Trail Feasibility Study between Central Park and 313 Pool's Corner. As you may recall, Township got a $33,000 grant from DVR PC to study the feasibility of a trail within the 202 bypass right-of-way. So over the last year, we've been working with the Bike and Hike Group and the community to plan out potential trail routes. We're here to give a quick overview, and Steve's going to go into the details quickly.
Okay, we can skip this slide? All right, this just gives a local context showing our Doylestown Bike and Hike Map. I think we all know kind of where we are here. It extends from Central Park on the, on the south side to Pool's Corner to the north. Next, next slide. This is the regional context, so this is the circuit trails map. The dotted lines are exist, are proposed trails or planned trails, and the solid lines are existing. Just kind of want to put, point out here that that study area to the northeast extends all the way to New Hope, and then down to the south actually provides a connection eventually, hopefully, to the Kukulah River Trail on your way to Philadelphia. Next slide. So this was, so at the start of this whole study, we actually had to, as the start of pandemic, so we kind of had to pivot a little bit. We had it slated to do like a normal public open house style meeting, and we shifted and we kind of like built this thing from scratch, which was a public outreach, but it was all virtual, and it was a virtual meeting room. So could you just click one more time? It's going to bring us around the room. In this room, we had a welcome survey, a video presentation, some project information, and frequently asked questions. The back of the room here was sort of the bread and butter. It had local and regional context board, the alternative alignments, which showed four different alignments, all color-coded, and opportunities and constraints so that the public could get a handle on what our engineering challenges were. The photo logs and then exit survey. So I just want to kind of point out, like when we did the open houses before for some past projects, we got maybe 50 to 80 people. Here, if you go to the next slide, we had two, over 200 people enter the room and give us feedback. And of those 200 people, we found that majority of them used the trail for both biking and walking, and the third one was actually to get to other neighborhoods, which I think promotes the overall connectivity of the entire network. And then the, the slide to the right here actually showed that 100, over 120 people were in favor of this trail concept, and four people were not. So I think that speaks volumes. The trail alternative that they chose, most were undecided, and then the next three were kind of all tied. Next slide. So the trail alternative that we recommend is the, is the black route, and if you guys have already seen the map, it goes from New Britain Road on the south side of 202 over to Easton Road, utilize some land development opportunities to cross over to the north side, and then continue all the way to Pool's Corner on that north side there. Next slide. And Chris will talk about the implementation plan.
We've got a game plan of how we could execute this project. We've broken into four major construction pieces. The first one, we've actually moved forward with a grant application already along New Britain Road between Central Park and Rolling Hills. That went in earlier this summer, so that would be the first project that would move forward as part of this plan. So at this point, we're asking the board to make a motion to adopt the plan as part of the overall bike and hike planning for, for the township, as well as adding this route to the official bike and hike map for the township.
Thoughts, questions?
I, I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I just ask, the recommended funding though, is that, we haven't been guaranteed any of that?
No.
No. So that would be the only, contingent on the funding of course.
You're not authorizing building it, you're just putting it on your plan so that it's there for future developers or the like, they know you have a.
Okay, perfect. I'll second that motion then.
I do have one grand scheme picture. Has any work been done on the path between Doylestown and New Hope, or is that just a line on a map right now?
A line on a map, basically.
There's a motion to second, any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Can you, can you remind me again, I know I asked you guys this the last time you showed, but the, the virtual meeting room, what was, who did that?
We did.
You guys?
Yeah, that was, that was a website that we developed, you know, we had, the pandemic created problems for outreach.
I mean, it is, it's, it was just so well done.
Thank you.
It's incredible.
Yeah, we're actually using it moving forward no matter what, you know, it's, it's giving people the option to do things from home, and we're using it on all our projects now, even if we do town halls in person. So we're doing both now, so.
You should start marketing that, like out. People would pay for that.
We loved it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They're not going too far, and Tom's going to join them, I believe.
Safe fruits to school?
Yeah.
Okay, as you know, we're working on the Shady Retreat Safe Fruit to School project. This was a project that we started a few years ago. It would be a new bike and hike trail along Burpee Road, Shady Retreat Road, and Lime Keln, expanding connectivity to Doyle Elementary, as well as connectivity to Dalval. Township was fortunate to get a $985,000 grant in 2017, and we're about 90% done with all the permitting and design for that project. However, when we got to the, the cost estimating, we found out there was a number of elements that were added to the project over the, you know, through the design process, and the construction cost is basically doubled.
Wow.
So we went back to PennDOT, we asked for additional funding for the project, and they said there's a grant fund out now, there's another grant, it's basically the same grant we won a few years ago, another round is available, so they recommended we apply again for about another million dollars to, to complete the, complete the project. In, in return, the township, again, the PennDOT said our chances for receiving additional funding would be improved if Township could contribute some kind of a match to, to, to that, to that, to that grant. Working with Dave and his folks, we're recommending that we, that the township use the Township Engineer for inspection as the match to that million dollar grant.
I see.
So I think we're, at this point, we're requesting approval to move forward with a grant application for, for TASSA for that project.
All right, sounds like a plan. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's where the, that's where the inspection fees come from.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Your approval.
All right, replacement of damaged township vehicle. All right, Stephanie rode through the water the night of Ida, getting to the township building, and her car was flooded. We have to replace it. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And you can get the one that's like, the first one that's available.
Thank you.
We, we're not going to get a redoubt vote?
The road was not barricaded, I just would like that to be stated. It was not barricaded, and it was detention based.
That was the borough.
It was the borough. It's never flooded a road before, I was shocked.
All right.
And it was pitch black.
It wasn't your fault.
I know, sorry.
Feel bad, though.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, border, Board of Auditor, what do you want us to do with this Board of Auditor's vacancy? Do you have to, we announced it.
We, we, we announced it when.
You have no applicants?
We have had no applicants, and we did put it up.
Is the, is the seat on the November election?
Yes, it is.
If you, you can't make an appointment, nobody's applied.
Yeah, I mean, it'll get, I mean, there's people running for the fall.
It's like indentured servitude.
Yeah.
You can't, I mean, if nobody applies, you can't make an appointment, so it's vacant.
Okay, we just leave it vacant.
They're not going to come, the police aren't going to come and drag you out because you haven't made an appointment.
Do the, do the candidates for auditor know that this is open? I mean, are there any candidates?
We've done that before, where they, I mean, I don't know.
We just appointed one.
Right, and he resigned.
Yeah.
I don't know who's on the ballot if.
Okay, well, whatever, I guess then just leave it as it is.
If somebody wins in November, you can appoint them to the ballot.
I guess what?
There you go.
That is true.
They should be tracked.
All right. Then we have the proposed 2022 schedule, meeting schedule. Everyone had an opportunity to look at it, I don't, you know, everything's the same, pretty much.
Pretty much same, with the same schedule we've had this year.
It looks good to me. Jen, you happy?
Um, yes.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion.
So we take action.
And I'll second. All right, there's a motion to second to approve the meeting schedule for 2022, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go. Supervisors, Herrick, okay, under supervisors, I'm afraid I have a few things. First, it's a happy one, and we netted about 25,000 from the golf outing, just so you know. Yeah, so just know, a lot of work went into it, and thank you, Karen, for all your hard work. And, you know, we did the usual thing, pass and hat. And the next thing I wanted to speak to is thanking, and I, you all, if you don't know what our public works and our police and everybody else in the emergency management, Sinclair Salisbury, I was, I was amazed, Stephanie, the night of Ida, and everything was coordinated, Rick Shea, Chris, Paul Gar out there on the, on the roads, the police and fire rescuing people from waterlogged cars and cars that are floating, and our building was open for all those folks who didn't have anywhere to go. A couple of people ended up here for most of the night, and we were the only place in this, available. New Britain brought a person over here because they didn't have a similar facility, but we were here, I was so proud of the hard work. Sergeant Whiteside had her squad going, and I just, I can't tell you enough how important that the, these folks were to that event. So I, I, I had to say, because I was there, I saw it, and I, and I think it's important that, that we, that we be present in an event, when we have a storm like that, and be ready, and we were. Now, there's some things that we have to work out, and we're going to have a, a post-Ida meeting on, I think, September 27th, where, you know, all of us who were there, or some of us who weren't there, we're going, are going to meet to see how we can do things better and fill any gaps. So that's happening. The other thing I wanted to talk to you.
Barb, can I just add on to that? I also think just for, from the board, I think, thanks to you, because, you know, Barb was also, as our chairman, was also there all night and was working with displaced folks, so, you know, I want to thank you for.
Thank you.
The way you stepped up, and, and it's not the first emergency situation that, that you've done that for, so it does not go unnoticed.
I want to say the same thing, I appreciate it, and also all the updates, and appreciate Stephanie making sure the social media was going out.
Yeah.
People updated because people were looking, so thank you to everybody who was there.
Yes, and, and our lady is safe. All right, the next thing, Stephanie and I and Nancy went to the meeting of Doylestown Fire Company Engine Number One on, on September 14th. It was so well organized and presented. They're not looking for tax dollars, they're looking for help with recruiting and retaining their volunteers. They're, they're down 77% of volunteers over the last 30 years. That means we have less and less people who are, who can step up and do what our volunteers That means we have less and less people who are, who can step up and do what our volunteers have done for years. And not for wanting to do it, there's, there are just not enough volunteers or people willing to do it. Apparently, the training for the volunteers is onerous. It's like, I don't know, 130 some hours?
Two hundred hours.
Over 200 hours, over six months of school to actually become a firefighter. They need us to help recruit and retain. And we're going to stand by. You know, we said, hey, look, we have all our social platforms. You want to put a video together? We can blast it out there. Nancy made some suggestions about the youth and getting them involved with us through the schools. But just so you know, that's their goal. And that's what we're going to have to help them do somehow. We gave them as many suggestions as we could. I think their community leaders are going to get together periodically. We volunteered to offer some people to, you know, to meet with those folks and stay committed to help our fire engine, our fire company. Keep what they have and grow the people that they need.
Those numbers are devastating, going from like, almost 800 to 12.
Yeah.
That they currently have. So I agree. Commitment to them is...
I wasn't able to make the meeting, but, you know, one of the things that I can do personally is push it out through our TMF platform, because there's a ton of veterans that are living in this area.
Oh, yeah.
Knowing that this opportunity exists. I think a lot of that, and frankly, some of my employees are comprised, the 12 that are still there. So I'll do that on my end, too.
Yeah.
And I'll link up with them and see how I can partner with them on that.
Great. Thank you. It's all good stuff. And finally, this is something long coming. There's a Senate Bill 419, as you've been provided, that authorizes local municipalities to use radar in traffic enforcement. Our chief wants this. BACATO, Bucks County Association of Township Officials wants this. They're supportive. And we were asking, from BACATO's position, we're asking the municipalities throughout Bucks County to also endorse this as well. There's been one objection to, that I know of, from anybody to this Senate bill, and it comes from Representative Yaw outside of, he's in one of the L counties, Luzern or Lackawanna or one of, in that area, west of the Susquehanna. Anyway, his objection was that the police departments be limited in how much they can collect from these fines. And I think it's limited like 10% of your budget. And everybody believes that there's no way that you're going to make money, like, anything that would exceed, you know, a million dollars in, you know, radar enforced traffic violations. So that is like a useless, I think it's written in here, but that's, that was the only objection. And I think the concern is in this bill. So I would ask that, you know, to support our chief, that we approve the Senate Bill 419.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. That's all for me. Now, I know, Jen, you have something specific?
Oh, sure. So I brought this up last year, I believe. One of the things that we had done as a township was to require, to limit firework usage in the municipality to certain holidays. And we had a schedule of holidays that's been set every year. One of the holidays that we did not include on that is Diwali, which has become kind of in the news lately, particularly, and I believe due to an increased number of residents that celebrate the holiday. For those of you who don't know, Diwali is the celebration, is mostly a Hindu celebration of light. It is oftentimes associated with lanterns and fireworks, those types of things. So this isn't a non-firework kind of holiday. And I just thought, if we were to add it this year to the list of allowed firework holidays for that ordinance, and maybe put it in the, I'll actually ask Jeff how we would manage to do that. But I would like to allow it for at least this year, so that families can celebrate Diwali.
So you, it would be one day out of the five-day celebrate?
It'd be, the third day of Diwali is the day that you would set off fireworks, which this year is November 4th.
Right.
If I may, just to support what Jen's saying, the district added this particular holiday as a district holiday.
Yeah.
And some people may not realize this, but 10% of the student population in Central Bucks celebrates Diwali.
Yeah.
So it's a significant holiday for a lot of people. So...
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
A motion would be to authorize me to amend the ordinance and advertise it in a timely fashion, so that you can consider it before the holiday.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for doing that, Jen.
Okay. So, and then finally, Nancy, not finally, but Nancy has a resolution for our consideration, forming a veterans committee.
Yep.
Advisory committee.
Thanks.
Nancy, before you get to this, we all read it. We know what you want to do.
Right.
But I think you need, it needs to say you have to be township residents to serve, and you need to have, besides the five veterans or Gold Star family, you need to have a board member as a liaison and stuff like that.
Okay. I can make sure we amend that?
Yeah.
Can we vote on it if we amend?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. That's no problem.
Anything else?
I just wanted to say, it would be an honor to recommend a veterans advisory committee. I think, obviously, with the 20th anniversary of September 11th, and I think we're one of the few townships that doesn't have a veterans committee. Ryan's strong presence, obviously, with Card's Gold Star families. And I personally have experienced my own uncle being identified through the Korean War program that identifies remains. So I think just creating resources, I'm not looking to create more work so much for the township staff, if anyone's wondering. More, make sure that the resources are on our website. And then I actually did talk to Supervisor Mannion about maybe there's some opportunity to take a couple of times that we can recognize our Gold Star families. I think it's important that we do that, and I'd appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Jeff, do you have anything?
No. I mean, I think just, I would make the adjustments. If you approve it, you can sign it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I do have some questions in terms of scope of what the committee would be accomplishing, because we do have the Travis Mannion Foundation and the VFW in our group. I don't want to cannibalize their efforts at all. I want to make sure we work with them and that the township is providing resources for our veterans and not necessarily adding more confusion.
And that's exactly what I'm looking to do. I talked with Stephanie about, it would be what I, my vision, and the committee can decide, would be maybe adding a page to our website that points, the county has a really prolific information about veterans. But, you know, maybe there's trips that are happening, maybe there's transportation, TMS programs, the mental health resources. It's those links to those other sources. It's not us replicating what's already established, but that would become a resource for people because sometimes they're looking, and they're like, I'm looking for this, you know, particular information. I'm not looking to replicate anybody's work, but if someone's on our website, they can find it.
So you don't necessarily see this as maybe like an every month kind of thing, but like maybe quarterly?
No. On the resolution, it's every other month.
Okay.
It could potentially be even as needed.
Okay. And my only other concern was what Barbara already brought up about, I think it's a very narrow scope of membership, that we have to open up to more township residents who would be willing to help out as well.
Yeah. Township residents, Gold Star families.
Now, he's saying not limited to just...
I don't know that we should, I don't think, you know, the more I think about it, I don't know that it should just be limited to veterans. I say if it's five, you know, maybe three have to be representative of veterans or Gold Star families. Because it's also really good to kind of bridge that gap, too.
Yeah. I just wanted to reach out. I don't have a...
Are you okay with that?
I'm totally good with that. Yeah.
I have to agree with Dan. Dan, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yeah. I have to agree with Dan on one of the points that he made. When I did nonprofit work, a lot of times new people, very excited, very well-intentioned people would start a similar nonprofit in the same arena. And just like you noticed with the fire company having issues with volunteers, getting volunteers, it's like that with nonprofits all around. I mean, Ryan's been very successful with her organization, but I know smaller organizations suffer from volunteer burnout because they're trying to do, pull themselves from every different direction. So for me, I would love to see us put a lot of effort into maybe pointing to our website and maybe partnering with an organization that already does this, already so well and has experience. If you're just looking at being able to advertise events and promote...
It's more...
I think we could partner with, maybe instead of creating a whole committee where we have to have staff and, you know, like Dan used to cannibalize.
Yeah. I think it's less, I mean, I agree with you about the resources. We should, I think we have a responsibility as a township to provide resources to our veterans within our township. But I also think that, you know, listen, I run a veteran service organization. I see no conflict of interest. I see it more like, we are probably one of the only municipalities that does not do something to celebrate Memorial Day and Veterans Day. We've got a Triangle Park. We have a park that honors our service members. We don't do anything there. So even small little ceremonies twice a year to just show our commitment to our veterans in our community.
Okay.
I think that, and that's not stuff that's going to compete with a nonprofit.
As long as that's the scope, I wasn't entirely clear based on the resolution.
I don't see fundraisers or...
Okay. Okay. No, no, no. You know how it is with volunteers.
Yeah.
People are pulled so many different directions, and it just makes everybody ineffective to the mission that they're looking to promote. So, okay. Well, if it's that, and, you know, as a wife of a veteran, I understand how important it is to have, you know, have these, their work recognized. So, yeah, I would support it as long as it's not pulling away from other resources.
That's, yeah, it's not my intention, more to recognize and let people know we're committed and we support, you know. And, you know, with the 20th anniversary, I mean, I think we can all reflect on where we were 20 years ago on September 11th. I just brought home a newborn. So I lost a good friend, and, you know, I think we all can reflect. And I think it's important that we take that time to, you know, be, finally catch up to the other townships that are doing something. But I'm not looking to expand the scope other 10, point people in the right direction. And as Ryan said, identify maybe two days of the year that we can do a ceremony or recognize families.
And I'll commit to helping from a board perspective, to not put too much on the staff. You know, I don't want to make it staff burdensome, but I'll make the motion to approve the resolution, barring the changes that we discussed.
Yeah. Is there a second?
So can I get clarification on the membership?
I think we said, maybe if it's five, maybe, and I just threw this out.
Up to five.
Three that are veterans or Gold Star family, and then two civilians.
And a board liaison.
And then a board liaison.
Even just talked about, like, it could be a Gold, it could be a family member. It doesn't have to be the actual veteran. It could be a family member. It can be, and that was my thought. I mean, you have parents who's...
You have to advertise the existence of the new committee and ask for applicants.
Listen, we don't have to put any, frankly, we don't have to put any barriers around the committee members if we don't want to. I think if you're so inclined to support our veteran community, you're going to come out. And so maybe we shouldn't limit it.
Kind of my thought, too, and the success of the committee, if there, I mean, I remember when I first started, we had a committee for seniors that ended up, we ended up sunsetting because there was not that much participation. So if we open it up to just general Doylestown Township residents, then it would help keep it alive in case there's some, you know, less interest in, from veterans in being on this committee, although I doubt that'll happen.
And is to expand the number to seven rather than five?
I don't know. What sense do we get that we would have a problem filling these seats?
Oh, I don't know.
I would start with five.
Okay.
You can always increase. Start with five. If we have 10, 12 people that apply, then maybe, you know, we talk about...
You can have members at large, too.
Yeah.
You know.
And with regards to like, having veterans, if we open it up to everyone, then when we interview people as the board, that's something we can take into consideration.
Consideration.
Absolutely.
All right. There's a motion, you understand the changes? All right. Motion, second with the changes. All in favor of the motion?
Was there a second?
No.
There was no second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Dan, do you have anything?
The only things I have to announce are just updates on the EAC and Water and Sewer Committee. EAC is having their monthly native plant garden cleanup this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So you can do that, take a break, come back for the food truck festival, get some food, walk through the garden. And then we had a meeting of the Water and Sewer Board for the first time in about three months, where we reviewed a preliminary draft of the 537 Plan to give the board an update on that. They should be getting the preliminary draft the end of October, the committee, that is. And then if the committee's okay with it, then it should be in the board's hands in the next month or so. So I'll keep you apprised as that changes.
Thank you. Ryan?
Nothing for me.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to unfinished business, the proposed warrantless arrest ordinance.
If you might, if you recall, in July, an ordinance was presented to the board for your consideration for advertisement. And it came as a result of what other communities have done, and it was more complicated than need to be, and it included things that didn't have to be there. So the chief and I worked through it and just basically incorporated the provisions of the state statute into the resolution, into the ordinance, I'm sorry, that then permits the police department to make certain warrantless arrests for a certain limited number of offenses. So I think I resolved Jen's issue. So I think at this point, the only thing to do is authorize me to advertise it, so you can consider it at a later meeting.
I would like to make the motion to advertise.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving along, let's go to the next new business, land development, Ashbridge at Furlong requests an extension. That's, we don't need to pass on that, right?
Yeah. September 27th extension. Do we need a motion, Jeff?
Yeah. You need a motion to approve receipt of the extension.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meadow Creek, 60 Meeting House Road, final land development. Planning Commission has recommended that we approve the final development.
I'm ready for the script, if you want me to give you the script. I'd like to take the mask off so my glasses don't fog up, and I can actually read the script.
Is it A through Q?
Final subdivision plan for 60 Meeting House Road, also known as Meadow Creek, tax parcel 9-4-65-1. On June 15th of this year, the board approved the preliminary subdivision plan for the Meadow Creek project. Plans which were approved proposed the construction of 10 single-family dwellings in the aforementioned parcel. Plans before you tonight were prepared by Holmes Engineering, were dated January 22, 2021, and were last revised May 17, 2021. Your planning commission, pardon me, as meeting held on August 23, 2021, recommended approval. If you were inclined to approve the final subdivision plan, the following conditions would apply. Continued compliance with the conditions imposed as part of the preliminary subdivision approval, which occurred on June 15, 2021, which set approval was noted in correspondence from me to Mr. Goldthorpe dated June 15, 2021, except to the extent modified by this approval. Two is compliance with the comments set forth in Panoni Traffic Report dated August 19, 2021. Next, compliance with the Panoni Engineering Review Letter dated August 19, 2021. Next, compliance with the Gilmore Associates Planning Review Letter dated August 16, 2021. Next, compliance with the correspondence received from Sinclair Salisbury Director of Code Enforcement dated August 19, 2021. Next, compliance with the Michael Baker International Review Letter dated August 11, 2021. As noted in the preliminary plan approval, applicants shall pay a fee in lieu of recreation in accordance with the township ordinance. As referenced in the preliminary plan approval, applicants shall make an offset contribution of $1,000 for each new dwelling unit to be paid as of the execution and funding of development financial security agreements. Received of all permits approved, many agencies having jurisdiction. Any waiver request or respective waivers noted previously in the preliminary plan approval relate to specific lots. Trails should be moved further away from the out parcel towards Lot 9 and 10 at the rear corners. Applicants shall work with the township to provide five additional trees and 12 additional shrubs that will be on the planned locations resolved by the township consultants and the planning commission, hopefully. Funding and execution of land development financial security agreements. Applicants shall execute as to order management agreement to form satisfactory to township manager. Plans shall be ADA compliant. Applicants shall pay the cost of the potential speed limit change to Meeting House Road with the understanding that cost shall be limited to unnecessary signage and advertising, but not the cost of the traffic study. Mr. Goldthorpe, I did share this with you, did I not?
Yes, you did.
Are you all right with those conditions?
Yes, I am.
All right, hearing the conditions, is there a motion to approve the final land development plans presented?
I would like the motion to move forward on the Meadow Creek plan.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good to go.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And then next is the Meadow Creek Planning Module with a postcard waiver. That means that Stephanie just told me, that there's sewer capacity available, and this is a short way of getting it approved without having to go through a planning module.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're good to go, thanks.
Appreciate it.
And then the next is also a postcard waiver for 1423 Ferry Road, has a failing system, and there's sewer available, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, application next is, what is this? Oh, Food Truck. Okay, are they?
This is a different vendor.
I was gonna say...
Yeah, this is...
The vendor's not available.
Yeah, the vendor we typically use is not available.
Okay, so this is for Saturday.
This is a new one, and so we felt, we wanted to bring it back to board.